Welcome to the September 5, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices, and agendas and speaker request forms are looking at the back of the chambers. The commission now utilizes speaker request forms. If you would like to speak on an item, please complete the speaker request form located at the bookshelf at the back of the chambers and return to Commission Manager Holly Hennessy. It's located on the lower right side of the dais. At this time, we'll call the meeting into order, and I would ask Commissioner Drews to do the moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Drews. At this time, it's, we are going to review and approve the agenda. Is there any changes or additions to the agenda? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Roskinet, seconded by Drews. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is recognition of new employees. We just want to take a time to thank all the new employees that came here this morning and introduced themselves to us and all the hard work that they do, and we just want to wish you a welcome aboard, and if there's anything you need from us, please don't hesitate to contact us. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda, and I'll recognize Commission Manager Holly Hennessy.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items: approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 15, 2023; number seven is approval of the Health Care Trust Board bylaws from 2018; number eight is approval of the 2024 Local Emergency Management Performance Grant Subrecipient Agreement submitted by Emergency Management; number nine is approval of the Adopt a Highway application for a portion of Old Folsom Road by the Hard Rock or Cheer Organization; and finally, number 10 is to declare one Glock 9mm serial number BCHC 539 as surplus for the purpose of private sale.
Thank you, Holly. At this time, is there any members of the public who wish to have any items removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I go to the Commissioners. Are there any Commissioners who want any items removed from the consent agenda for discussion? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Drews.
Seconded.
Seconded by Roskinet. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This brings us to regular agenda items. Item number 11 is the Pennington County Housing Redevelopment Commission repositioning resolution. Number 944, Mr. Bryan Alback, Executive Director.
Good morning, Honorable Commissioners. Thank you for your time this morning. For the past 30 months, we have been, as a housing authority, looking at and evaluating how we can have a bigger impact on our community. How can we have a bigger impact on those families that we serve? And we've, we've gone down many different paths. Just to remind you, one of the tools that a private developer or a nonprofit has is the 9% low-income housing tax credit. We're, many of us are pretty well-versed in that, and the funding for that is very limited in South Dakota, and it's even more so limited here in Pennington County. We're going to get about 41 of those units here in Pennington County any given year. That's it. So we've been looking for ways, and again, with, at the direction of our board, we've been looking for ways to, again, impacting more families without maybe looking so much at that low-income tax credit opportunity. One of the tools at our disposal is public housing repositioning. We have 500 units of public housing, and one of the ways that we would be able to do this potentially would be to reposition those properties outside of public housing and under more of a private market model where we then project-based some Section 8. And what that would do is that would give us the, the financial latitude to be able to unlock some of the reserves that we built up or reserves in the future, and again, also unlock the future cash flows from those properties to do more development in our community for low-income families. I told you, we started this about 30 months ago. We, we started with some technical assistance from and through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Many housing authorities in the country are doing this. We, we've had Commissioner and staff training. Some of us have gone to national trainings on repositioning. What does that look like? And then in December of 2022, we finished, after putting out a request for proposals, I brought a, I brought those proposals to our board in December and had the board award a contract to Dominion Due Diligence. They're a national consulting firm that helps housing authorities move forward with that. The application process, as you, as you can imagine, because this is federal money, is very detailed, and we don't want to do anything to mess it up. So the, the board awarded that contract. Dominion started a Phase 1 in January of 2023. They finished that and made their presentation before our Commissioners in July of 2023. The Commission accepted that study and went ahead and, by resolution, moved forward with, let's start this process. This is good for us. Many housing authorities in the country are doing this because this is a last-ditch effort. They've got huge physical deficiencies with their properties. They don't have the financial wherewithal, like we do, to correct those deficiencies, and because HUD is on the Declaration of Trust, it makes it very difficult for them to go out and get financing. We're not in that particular case. If you're aware of, of repositioning, that's not the reason we're doing it. We're doing it, again, to give us, give ourselves some flexibility, both regulation and financially, to be able to move forward with some repositioning or some development, again, outside of, outside of public housing. Where are we at today? We've started an appraisal process. We would like to go ahead and do a disposition of 37 scattered, non-contiguous units. We would take the funds of that and put it into another development, probably a 70-unit multifamily property north of town. We're in, 20% of those appraisals are done, final reports are in. We're also in the middle of a environmental review. HUD doesn't let us do anything, even sell property, without completing an environmental review, and that's being completed at this point. I will be holding resident meetings in September and October. The process is very, it's a very long process. It's probably going to be right around 18 months just to get the application through HUD, and part of that process is to make sure that we are meeting with those families who are going to be impacted by this and, and providing plenty of education about what this looks like for them going forward. I have been very intentional about keeping our attorney involved in this. I did not want to get down the road and then something comes up and then I have to get our attorney caught up. He's part of all of our biweekly meetings. He was at the July meeting, and through this process, because of those open lines of communication, he advised that the path we're on could be considered a redevelopment of projects and redevelopment plan, which requires approval by you, our governing body. I have forwarded his legal opinion to be included in your board packet, and I guess what I'm asking of you today is to adopt the resolution before you that approves the Housing Authority's Resolution 944. I'll sure answer any questions.
Thanks, Brian. Is there any questions, Brian, from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinet.
You know, if I understand it, when we went to the convention in Las Vegas, was it Melrod, HUD is just, HUD goes back to, what, the '30s, and you just don't know the longevity being under the HUD platform, and that's one of the reasons, if we go from HUD to Section 8, we're, we're going to probably be in a lot better situation if I, just so that the other Commissioners kind of understand why we're doing this, because HUD, we just don't know how reliable HUD's going to be going forward.
That's a, that's a great point, and yep. So HUD, HUD is trying, HUD appears as though they are trying to move away from the public housing model nationally. The big housing authorities in the country all have Section 8 assistance. We, we do too, and so a lot of these housing authorities are, are moving again from that public housing model, and public housing is Section 9 of the, of the, of the federal regulation. And what we don't want to find ourselves here in Pennington County is the last housing authority in the country with public housing, because then we have no, we have no advocate out there. My, and what we've talked about is, is our recommendation is, let's move everything to the Section 8 platform, because then we have the biggest housing authorities in the country advocating on our behalf, because they're advocating for their own Section 8 programs. Houston, Texas, Los Angeles, California, New York, Ohio, it doesn't matter if it's a red state, blue state, what's purple state, they're, they all have Section 8, and you have those senators, those local representatives who are advocating for Section 8. Another thing that is very difficult about public housing, and we know this, it's so easy for them to cut funding on public housing because they're not cutting the assistance of people, they're cutting the assistance of property. So when we've come through other federal budget fights, public housing will take a hit, but Section 8 will stay stable because when you cut Section 8, you're cutting the, the assistance of the people, those, those voucher holders. Again, it doesn't matter, blue, red, purple, they don't, politicians, and I'm sorry, they don't want to do that. So again, to, to position ourselves in a way to, to, to better closely align ourselves with some of those bigger housing authorities out there, I think makes a lot of sense for us locally here in western South Dakota.
Chairman.
Ms. Hagcock.
So I like the Section 8 repositioning, and like Ron said, the classes were good to learn a lot about Section 8 repositioning. What we're doing now is asset repositioning on the 37 houses, and that's where the money, with the $2 million, will go to, to make a housing authority more on the, it'd be the west side of Rapid City. What I like about this group and what we're doing today is we're looking at for the future of what we can do for low-income housing. When we're talking about that, we're talking about disabled people, we're talking about elderly people, we're talking about veterans. It's huge. People think low income, you guys are just giving free housing and not doing anything about it. Well, those three categories are the biggest contributors to our housing authority right now. So what I like also about this housing authority is people are handing out low-income tax credits to build these houses, and there's big apartment areas in Rapid City and other places. You've got to remember, after 10 years, when those credits are done, what happens to those buildings? There was a seminar, or basically Alan Solano was telling about all the tax credits and all the housing authorities that were giving these tax credits for low-income housing in the next 10 to 20 years that are going to come up, and all these people are going to be back where they were before because they're going to sell those buildings, usually what happens, and then those low-income prices that they were getting tax credit or getting help with, with their buildings are not going to be used anymore, and the people are going to be let go. And a lot of times, that leaves a lot of people. I mean, that's a lot of people he was talking about that's not going to have housing for the future. Well, that's what's nice about this, and this group of housing authority and what Brian runs, it can't happen. It has to stay like this. It has to stay at those prices, and these buildings have to be used for elderly, disabled, and veterans and people with low-income housing. It doesn't change with tax credits, it doesn't change with asset repositioning. We stay the same, and it's the future for people to be taken care of in Rapid City in a way that they still have to pay rents, but it's affordable to them. And I could tell you, with our veterans, we have tons of those, just because I work with a lot of veterans, but the disabled and elderly, elderly's getting bigger and bigger in our groups, so this is a huge thing. And I also like to give Brian Akbak a big, again, kudos. He's ran this, and he's kept these group of people that run his office, and he has a great team. One's going to retire here pretty soon. Robert, he's our finance guy, amazing. This whole team has made a huge difference with Brian being the leader of it, and I can't appreciate him more than I do today and where he's moving this housing authority to. Like I said, it's not just going to help some people, it's going to help a lot more. And again, thank you for everything you've done, and this resolution is, is well worth moving forward, and it's going to take us to the future. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagcock.
Mr. Drews.
So Brian, did I understand you to say that you need to hold public meetings on these, for these scattered housing? How do you go about that? Now, obviously, we don't have to have it at easy individual one, do you?
No, we will not. So what we will do, here's my strategy going forward. One, I already have a resident advisory panel. These are, this is a group of residents who have volunteered to come in and, and give me their opinion on, on policies and, and that we're thinking, discretionary policies that we are contemplating. I'll absolutely meet with them. But then the impacted families are going to be really these 37 families who are going to be, for lack of a better word, displaced, because we're going to sell these. I will meet with, they will, each, each family will get a, a letter from me. And again, my strategy on that is going to be offering morning opportunities, afternoon opportunities, offering, offering opportunities of varying days. You know, I don't want to get, I don't want to be some type of hardship as they have work schedules and things like that. I will meet with them on a weekend if that is more convenient for them. We'll not be meeting them at their, at their, at their property, but what I'm trying to do is come up with, again, come up with a time and date and a place and a day that is convenient for them so that, to try to mitigate the, the hardship, at least, of, of the meeting. There will also be a public hearing option as part of our PHA plan. As a housing authority, we're supposed to do a PHA plan every year. The annual plan is, is, for the public hearing part of that is always in December. That'll be coming up this December of 2023, and that is going to be a public hearing where that gets published in the Rapid City Journal, and we'll see if we have anybody show up as far as that, part of that process. So resident advisory panel, probably four opportunities for the impacted residents, and then the public hearing. So there's going to be about six opportunities just between now and the end of calendar year 2023. Hopefully, I answered your question on that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Chairman, one more thing, if I could. So you explained we're having a meeting, so what happens to the people? I'm sure what we just talked about, displacing people, what are we doing? And if you would share with what we're doing with the people and how we're helping them so they're not displaced and we're just saying, it's time for you to go, you got a month, that kind of thing.
The, the goal would be that they would move into some of our other properties, that they're not, that we're not, again, a total, we, we have 649 units. We're, we're proposing to sell 37 of those. We do have a fair amount of turnover in our housing, and I would be very pleased if we could just go ahead and get those families moved into some of the other housing that we already offer. Another option that they will be, if, when they do that, we will be paying, as a housing authority, all of their relocation costs. We'll be going and, and hiring a mover for them, again, to mitigate their hardship. The other option that they would have as families being displaced through this process is they would be offered what's called a tenant protection voucher, where I give, we, we give them, as a housing authority, a voucher. If they choose that, you know, I would rather just go to the private market with a voucher, that'll be an option that they'll have. If they choose that option also, we will pay for moving relocation expenses. Then, again, that also includes shutting off a utility at one address and opening up or, and starting, facilitating a utility at another address. We'll pay all of those fees. We're putting together that budget right now, what those relocation costs are going to, and that's part of, that's part of our plan that we'll be submitting to HUD. So did I answer your question?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinet.
So the scattered units there, the most difficult to manage, and that's the reason I'm on the commission now, because I got involved because of the scattered units, or one in particular. And the proceeds from the sale of the scattered units will go towards a 70-unit Vicki Power in the property, which we're going to earmark for workforce housing, and, and so we're looking at, you know, blue collar workers that would occupy that facility. So that would be a project, that would be project-based then, Brian?
It will not, that will, one will not be project-based, but that is going to be for those workers, well, I shouldn't say workers, because it's anyone that has income of 60% to 80% AMI, which is really kind of our definition of workforce housing. These are your families that are making 15, 16, 17, $18 an hour, and they're going to the private market, and they're finding it, they're finding it very difficult to find units. There's a lot of brand-new units being built in Rapid City, but many of them have already, they're already outside of what's affordable for, you know, that person, that very important person that's stocking the shelf at Walmart where I shop, and, you know, and they need, they need, they're, they're working 40 hours and they're unable to afford housing. And we feel as though we can fill that niche by building those 70 units of workforce housing. Commissioner Roskinet, what you're talking about would be, in the future, what we, we're maintaining our Faircloth Authority, and Faircloth Authority, I'm sorry if I'm getting too deep in the weeds here, housing authorities have a certain amount of Faircloth Authority. Ours is 500 units of public housing. We'll be able to build another 37-unit multi-family project, if that's what we choose, maybe on that site out there at Vicki Powers, and that will have project-based, that'll be a rad development, and that'll have project-based. So in time, that will, that will become, but the nice thing, the nice thing about getting that 70 units out of the ground is there's going to be little to no debt on it, and we can go ahead and use the cash flow off of that right away to start, let's, let's get the next development going, and it very well could be that 37 units. Did I answer your question?
Well, I think Deb hit on it, that this is a very, very bold move, and it takes a lot of energy to do that, and it's going to be very time-consuming, but I appreciate the fact that you took the bull by the horns, you got some of the Commissioners to Las Vegas so we could understand the process, and with that being said, you know, I totally support this motion in front of us.
I have one question.
Yeah.
Brian, so just some clarification, we have, you have 649 units, and when you talk about units, it could be an apartment complex with 60 units in it. And what, and for clarification, what you, you've got scattered HUD housing all over, and I believe you said, is there 60 units of those?
37 of those, yep.
And that's what you're trying to go away from, is, is those single-family units, bring them back in to build and reinvest into more units?
Correct. So Commissioner Roskinet, he, he alluded to the fact that these are more expensive for us to operate.
Yeah.
So a couple of things. They cost us, on average, about $2,000, each unit, about $2,000 a year more to operate those units. We monitor that, so you multiply that by 37 units, and it's like, well, that's a pretty big, you know, it's a pretty big number. The second thing is, is the, is the, our perception in the community. When I, if you were to drive by, we, we can go ahead and monitor, I work at the high-rise out over on the west side, and there's 105 units there. We're able to monitor the site for 105 apartments, pretty close, pretty easy. We begin to lose track of what's happening in our community because we're not always driving by those 37 units. We've got, you know, we're, we're running into things where it's very difficult to, to hire maintenance and all of that, and it's just much easier and, and much more efficient, not only financially, which, again, $2,000 a year less for each unit to, for us to maintain that, but also much more efficient, there's an economy of scale in being able to just, okay, well, the grass isn't mowed, and it's amazing how fast that gets ahead away from you when, well, the neighbor was supposed to mow the, or the, the resident was supposed to mow their grass, and they didn't, and we completely missed it until someone complains. And we don't want to have to, we don't have to manage that way either, but we, you know, we're being pulled in many different directions. So to get our housing kind of under one roof, or, or limit the number of roofs that we have to, to serve all of the families that we're serving is, is going to be more efficient for us also, and I think put us in a little bit better light with, with regard to our neighbors.
Well, thanks, Brian. I mean, that's, you explained it well. I mean, multi-units, trying to keep track of them and keep up on them, when you got your main ones, it makes a lot of sense, and being able to use that capital, it's understandable. So thanks for that explanation, Ms. Hagcock.
I make a motion to approve the resolution for Pennington County Housing Redevelopment Commission Resolution Number 944.
Second.
Then moved by Commissioner Hagcock and seconded by Commissioner Roskinet. Is there any public comment? Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Next, we, on our agenda is Sheriff Brian Mueller, the follow-up on the 2% wage increase.
Good morning, Commissioner. Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff. I've got a couple of things before you today, and the first one doesn't require a motion, but again, I appreciate the, the raises that you authorized for us back in August, but I, I wrote the motion pretty broad, and in working with the Auditor's Office, they need, there's a lot more logistics and detail that needs to go into that motion to help us get people moved where they need to get, so I just, I thought it would be best to let you know that that would be coming for the next meeting, because there'll be quite a bit of level of detail to be able to move the, the COs onto the deputy pay scale for that 2%, and all of the moves we have to make independently for the detox techs, detox techs twos, and the detox supervisors to get them moved and reclassified into their positions. So we're working closely with the auditor, but you'll see a detailed packet of that, that information at the next commission meeting, and I just wanted to let you know that would be coming, because we're currently advertising at those higher rates for hiring any new positions into those classifications starting September 17. So just as an FYI, I wanted you to know that that would be coming for the next commission meeting. And the second item is a clarification of something that we missed getting on the minutes back in 2022. As you recall, this process started, I detailed this out in the letter, but it started clear back in 2021 with vehicles supply chain issues, when we, you authorized us ordering eight vehicles in 2021. That, that company could not fulfill the contract due to supply chain issues, so they canceled the order, they reordered them again, they canceled it again. We brought it back in front of you in 2022 to order five vehicles through McKee Ford. They had canceled four of them, and then later in 2022, Sheriff Tom and I came and visited with you about picking up the vehicles through Carl Chevrolet on, on the emergency exception that we've used in the past, but we did not, and looking back at all the commission meeting, we did not get the, the authorization from you in the meeting minutes that we needed to, we did accept delivery of those five vehicles earlier in 2023. So I'm here before you today to ask for a motion authorizing that purchase from Carl Chevrolet, so we can meet the state auditor requirement for the meeting minutes.
Thanks, Brian. So in short terms, it was approved back in 2020, and just, they haven't been able to fulfill them, and so we're asking for the approval today with emergency.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd make the motion to authorize the emergency purchase of five new vehicles from Carl Chevrolet as follows. Five 2023 Chevrolet Tahos, state contract number 17619, from Carl Chevrolet, Des Moines, Iowa, for a total of $207,474.60, paid for out of the planned vehicle replacement budget.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded by Roskinet. Is there any discussion?
Chairman.
Ms. Hagcock.
You, Sheriff, you had eight vehicles, you'd still getting eight? You're getting five with this purchase, are you still doing three more this year?
We, we're not planning on that.
Okay, so you're not going to place, replace three more this year, but you're going to put it in your budget for next year?
We have, we have it in the budget next year. Sometimes in the fall, depending on where we're sitting with the budget, we pick up some. Sometimes in the fall, depending on where we're sitting with the budget, we pick up some unmarked vehicles. But if we, if we find those and we have the budget money, we'll, I'll bring that back before you again.
Okay. I appreciate that. And we went from twelve A to twelve B. So, on twelve A, since they're twelve B, I'm, I have the understanding. Twelve A, if you do the reclassified, um, if you would, put where they were today, meaning before the, the raise and then the future pay and total change on your sheet when you bring that back, if you would.
Okay. The, the dollar amount will be the same. It's just the logistics of the auditor needing the, the right verbiage to get people in the right positions.
And to see how many you're doing would be nice and with that future pay from where they went, because then we can kind of see who those people, now, you don't have to put names, just, you know, five people under this position we changed. And then any new hires from your new pay would be nice to see if you had hired any new ones from that change. By the time, maybe even you put this out, it would be nice to know.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely keep track of that for you.
That would be nice, just to see if it is making a difference. Because we're kind of, for me, I'm kind of tracking some of the wage stuff and what's happening. And if it's the wage and the other, um, areas that Pennington County might need to change for the future for, uh, employees, so.
I appreciate that. And it's, it's definitely already helped with retention. I've gotten quite a bit of feedback on that. And, uh, I know that, uh, that's helped on the recruitment aspect too, on their last two classes. So, thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
With that, we do have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion on the vehicles? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next, that brings us to item number thirteen, items from emergency management. Now, I'll recognize Dustin Moore.
According to chair members of the commission, Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager. It's good to be before you this morning. I won't take too much of your time. Every year, uh, we come before you with the local emergency, uh, operations plan. Actually, that will be transitioning probably next year to the local disaster operations plan. Emergency management really doesn't stick its nose in the day-to-day emergency operations of our first responders. So, that plan, the name of that plan will probably better reflect the contents, which is disaster operations, not necessarily emergency operations. Um, you'll see in your packet that, uh, this is not one of the plans that we make public, although it is available for your, your review anytime you'd want to come in and see that. Uh, we haven't made any, uh, substantive changes to it this year. Basically, we go in and we look for outdated information every year, contact lists, um, those types of things, just to make sure that, that, that the information contained in that plan is current and actionable. Uh, the only thing we really changed from last year to this year, uh, was some of our updated, um, uh, I'm sorry, um, funeral home, there is the word I was looking for. Funeral home and mortuary, uh, facilities and, and the numbers of decedents that they're able to process, the number of decedents we're able to store in coolers, uh, those types, that type of information. There's been some change, uh, in that landscape over the last year or two. So, we've updated our numbers and our contacts to reflect, uh, what might come to pass in the case of us having to enact our, our mass fatality plan. So, those are the only changes that occurred, uh, from last year into this year. Uh, but it's one of the requirements of the, the grant that we operate under, that, uh, that again, you so graciously passed in the, uh, consent agenda, that we bring this plan before you every year and get it approved. So, uh, here today, seeking approval on the twenty twenty-three, uh, local emergency operations plan for Pennington County.
It says that it was just informational only.
Shouldn't be. It should be approval of the plan.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
Make the motion to approve the plan as presented.
Motion's been made.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Ross Connect. Is there any further discussion or question?
Chair.
Go ahead.
I will say that I do see that on the, on the letter that was submitted and I'll make sure that's corrected for next time. That, that was an error on our part.
Okay. Thank you, Justin. Any further questions for Justin? Dustin. See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, that brings us to items from Highway Department and I'll recognize Superintendent Joe Miller.
Good morning, Commissioner. Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. Need to zoom in here. I had it way zoomed out. Um, first up in front of you is item A. Authorization to advertise and let aggregate stockpiles for Nichols Creek and Robertson Pit. Uh, we currently have a, uh, contract with a contractor for Nichols Creek or Pit. Unfortunately, the, there's been some hiccups and, um, just contractor not willing to work with the material that we've provided for binder and, and whatnot. Uh, so, after a meeting and a couple, uh, a couple of phone calls with the contractor, we've mutually agreed to terminate that contract and, and crush that contract next year or advertise and let for that contract next year for that same forty-five thousand tons. The Forest Service is also on board with that. Um, the Forest Service was jumping onto our contract to get some material. Uh, which has been one thing after another with the contractor since, uh, the contract was signed, it seems like, so. Um, and then the other one is Robertson Pit. Uh, we're currently out of gravel in that pit. Uh, it's a centrally located pit, uh, just east of town here. Uh, most of you are familiar with Farmingdale. Um, so it's, it's a pretty good location. If we need material anywhere in the county, it's, it's centrally located. So, um, that's the other reason we're, we're electing to go with that pit. We do have money allocated for this in our twenty twenty-four budget. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Sure.
Mr. Drews.
So, Joe, I presume you do have a, uh, signed termination of that agreement?
We will before we advertise this. So, we just, Nichols Creek Pit is up there in the high country, uh, just on the west side of Deerfield. So, we feel it's necessary to get this advertised, um, get permission to advertise it, uh, so we can get a contractor up there to look at it before the snow starts flying and the road gets closed, so.
Okay.
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
Motion is request to authorize the Highway Department to advertise and let bids for aggregate stockpiles, AGG twenty twenty-three dash one, Nichols Creek and AGG twenty twenty-three dash two, Robertson.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Seconded by Ross Connect. Is there any public comment? Any further from the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
Joe, is this the, the gravel from this pit, is this, uh, some of the stuff that we've considered mixing in, uh, another element?
Correct. Um, and that was one of the, the sticking points. Uh, I don't really, we can get into it at a later date. But, uh, yes, we hauled in bentonite from, uh, Cologne, South Dakota, about two hundred tons of that to, to try mixing in with this limestone at the, um, it was actually in Greg Blatt, or Greg Vavra's, uh, idea from LTAP to just see what kind of binder, uh, what it would do. You know, it's a, it's a fine line there with bentonite, because you can go from good road to slimy road pretty quick with, uh, too much of it. Um, so, yeah, we've already got that material hauled there. We've currently almost, uh, got all of our clay, our, our raw clay hauled there from the, the borrow pit that we've, um, got to the pit. So, the contractor that's bidding on it, this go around will know exactly what he's got and there should be hopefully no hiccups looking forward. Thanks.
Any further discussion? See none. We do have a motion on the floor. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B.
Item B is an agreement between Box Elder and Pennington County for the, uh, swap of two hundred and twenty-eighth street, uh, off of Radar Hill Road. So, a little bit of backstory. This, uh, two hundred and twenty-eighth street is about a quarter mile section line that will actually eventually end up with Cheyenne Boulevard, or it will be Cheyenne Boulevard at, once it gets connected to Elk Vale. This was paved when, uh, the development there went, went in back in, two thousand and sixteen is when it was paved without the knowledge of the city of Box Elder or Pennington County. Asphalt, as we all know, is a lot more expensive to maintain. It's actually almost double the cost to maintain versus gravel. Um, so Pennington County at that time, from my understanding, elected to not do anything with it. They said, okay, you paved it, it's your baby to maintain and we walked away from it. Obviously, the developers not, uh, maintained it at all. Box Elder is elected, since it is going to become Cheyenne Boulevard, they, they have agreed to take that over. Um, this agreement is just something to make sure that there is a jurisdiction assigned to it. Um, and as part of that agreement, we have agreed to go in there and use our asphalt zipper or asphalt grinder to grind that up, um, and turn it back to a granular base for the city of Box Elder so they can maintain it.
So, any questions for Joe on this?
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
What's the cost to redo that?
What do you mean to redo it?
You said you have to take the off asphalt.
So, we had to grind it. Uh, it'll be probably a day's worth of work. I can get that cost to you, but if I had to throw a number out, it'd be less than probably five thousand dollars.
Thank you. It just sound like a lot of work for.
No, it's, it's a quarter mile. When we did South Valley, we did it in about three days, four days, I think.
That's true.
And it's about a mile, mile and a half. It's a relatively quick process, especially with the, the little amount of asphalt that's on it. It's not going to take long to go through.
So, the question is, is your truck traffic through it, since you're going to do, kind of like you did South Valley? Remember the side pieces and stuff are having some issues from the truck traffic? Is Cheyenne Boulevard, Boulevard going to be a major thoroughfare at that point?
It will be at some point, but our hope with this, it'll be Box Elder's deal.
They have an understanding what this, that means when you do this?
Correct. Well, this, this is just the swap and what Box Elder does with it, after that is up to them. Pennington County's out of it. And it makes sense, because Box Elder is actually on both sides of it.
Are they paved on both sides of it?
What's that?
Are they paved on both sides of it?
It's on Radar Hill Road and then it goes to a dirt section line. So, there's no, it dead ends currently at a, at a substation.
I went out there, but that's why I thought it went paved, then it went to kind of the development, then it stopped. So, I didn't know, I didn't go to the other side of Cheyenne, but.
Yeah, there's four or five miles of dirt. I mean, there, there's no road to it currently. It will be projected Cheyenne Boulevard at some point.
And a lot of development on it. Thank you.
Could be, yes.
Any further questions? Thanks, Joe. I think this helps clear up some of our concerns with roads, who's responsible for one. And I think it's a good compromise. So, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to approve agreement BE twenty twenty-three dash one, transfer jurisdiction of a portion of two hundred and twenty-eighth street to the city of Box Elder.
Thank you.
Moved by Drew, seconded by Commissioner Hancock. Is there any further discussion? Any public comment? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C.
Item C is a very, it's a, an identical agreement only with the city of Rapid City, um, for kind of different reasons. The city of Rapid City has put, uh, sewer and water in Seeger Drive, the portion from, uh, see, La Crosse to, uh, one forty-third. And they are currently in the design phase of putting sewer in one forty-third from, uh, Seeger all the way to Country Road and then Country Road up to their lift station. Um, so this agreement, again, just transfers the jurisdiction of these roads to them. Currently, they have jurisdiction of, I think, a quarter mile or a half mile of one forty-third. This will give them the full mile and then all of the miles of Country Road east of one forty, excuse me, west of one forty-third. And, you know, we had a couple of meetings with Dale and, um, trying to come to an agreement with, uh, them putting the sewer down our, our one forty-third. Um, so we didn't end up with another reservoir road, um, some of our stipulations. They just agreed to take over the road, I think, instead of agreeing with some of our stipulations, so.
Are you good, Joe? Is there any questions for Joe?
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
Right, right. One motion to request to approve agreement RC twenty twenty-three dash one to transfer jurisdiction of a portion of one forty-third Avenue, Country Road and Seeger Drive to the city of Rapid City.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion, any public comment? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D.
Item D is the resolution vehicle waiting through truck traffic restrictions. So, um, here in the last year or two, uh, several of our roads, um, so South Valley, I'll start with that one. Um, we took that over, I believe, in twenty twenty? Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, somewhere in there, I don't recall the exact year. Uh, we ground that back to gravel. Um, it was gravel for two years. Um, it was kind of a bear to maintain, so we put a chip seal on it. Um, and the, I believe what's going on is the garbage trucks going through to Kiefer, um, and just the sheer amount of through truck traffic on it. Um, for instance, uh, the ADT is, uh, night, just about two thousand trucks, cars a day. Of that, there's sixty-four trucks a day going through there. And we tried a little bit different. I think I explained this to a couple of commissioners here. Uh, we tried fixing the shoulders a little bit different this year, um, with some millings and learned that that's not a very good way to, to fix them. So, we, we're going to go back and fix those shoulders again. But once we fix them, we don't want them to get tore up again. So, that's one of, that's the biggest reason for the, the six ton per axle and no through trucks on, on South Valley. Um, I'll get to Longview. Longview has a pit, um, on the east side of Rangar Hill Road. Um, and for whatever reason, the trucks, instead of taking a, a left to head south to forty-four on Radar Hill, which is a, a pretty good road, um, they elect to go down Longview, which is showing its age. Uh, we've put off the, some maintenance due to the Apple Valley development, um, and it's just showing its age. Um, and they go down to highway forty-four that way. What reason? I don't know. Seems faster. If you look at the, the traffic counts, fifty percent of the traffic count from Radar Hill turns right onto Longview to go down to forty-four, instead of going down Radar to go to forty-four, for whatever reason. I don't know. I do it myself. So, my daycare is out there. It just seems to be a faster route. ADT on Longview is, uh, twenty-five hundred cars a day. Of that, uh, there's a hundred and forty-seven trucks on that per day. Then the other one, um, the old Folsom from Lo, uh, Lower Spring Creek to, uh, Lamb Road is a blotter surface, much like South Valley, so it can't really handle the, the large truck traffics. We've constantly fixed it since I've been in position in twenty eighteen. Put a lot of money into it, uh, and it's just not able to hold up to the truck traffic that goes through it. There's a, uh, a pit just on Lower Spring Creek, a gravel pit there also. Um, and I also think that a lot of trucks come off of highway seventy-nine, trying to avoid the scales, um, and use that as a cut across. Um, so that's the reason for that one. Um, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Sure.
Thanks, Joe. Mr. Drews.
So, Joe, can you tell us, uh, based on, uh, six ton per axle, uh, on those trucks, what is, how many cars does it take to equal one truck traveling on those roads?
Uh, for those, the six ton per axle, I, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, but, um, I mean, it's eighteen. You put me on the spot there. I shouldn't, I should know that question was coming, so I apologize. I'm not, I don't know the answer to that question.
Do you have, do you have another number you can?
So, an eighty thousand pound truck is about eighteen thousand cars, right? So, it takes, and that's a legal.
One eighty thousand pound truck equals?
Is that right, Sean? Do I got those mixed up?
Equals how many cars?
Eighteen thousand cars.
Eighteen thousand cars.
So, and the six tons per axle will, will limit that to no bigger than about a one-ton truck there.
You finished?
Yep.
Ms. Hancock.
So, for garbage service, like Sanders and all those, are they overweight?
They have trucks that can get under the six ton, or they'll have to adjust some of their routes.
Okay. Yeah, because they do a lot of garbage service for those areas and to say that you can't have trucks on there to a certain extent, or stay on the paved area, just depends because you have, um, trailer parks and stuff out there too. So, and yeah, I did drive the road and the sides are, the, the road's holding up well, but the sides, um, need a little help, but, um, I'll tell you, compared to what it was before, it was a blessing that you guys went out and did that. So, we can talk about the weight and, and to, people try to avoid the scales. Who monitors so these, these trucks aren't going to go on these roads?
And that's, uh, we're going to get in contact if this is passed today. Um, once the signs are up, we'll contact motor carrier and let them know that, hey, there's, there's some new load limits out and they can go do some enforcement and some, probably issue some warnings. The first, you know, just like they do on any speed limit change or any other sort of change. Just get them aware and we'll put some flags on the, on the, uh, the signs once we put them up, so.
I appreciate that, because when you're changing stuff and people don't know, you know, needing to get their supplies in and, and stuff to different areas. And I know there's places, um, that they go, can go without or go to different areas to do their trucks. But I just wondered how we do the load restrictions and, like I said, farm-to-market roads and other areas where, um, trying to keep that tonnage where you need to, um.
Well, and I'll point out that these. Well, and I'll point out that these, uh, these aren't permanent, right? I mean, once we get the, uh, the, hopefully the infrastructure that was put forth with the Apple Valley TIF. Once that infrastructure is put in and the road is, is, um, overlaid, I don't, I think we can take these back off of Longview. Um, South Valley, once we get some more strength and, and, uh, may possibly do some FDR, these, these changes aren't permanent. These are simply to try and preserve what we have currently, um, going forward and save the taxpayers. Instead of having to rebuild a road, we can still just maintain it.
So that makes sense because like I said, a lot of these trucks, um, some of them go that way for certain reasons. Others just because they avoid the, um, scales. So it's not all of them just doing it because they avoided scales, but. I appreciate what you're doing, um, and I appreciate what you did for South Valley in that area when you overlaid it because there was, that's been dirt. And we fought that since I was on city council. So that's been, uh, going like that, that donut hole, Joe, for a lifetime. So, um, meaning not since twenty twenty, that's when you had to deal with it. But it's been an issue since I've been on here, which is a while. So thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine dash zero five dash one to establish load limit restrictions on portions of Longview Road, Old Folsom Road and South Valley Drive and through truck restrictions on South Valley Drive.
Second.
Motion's made and, uh, seconded by Roskinet. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Next we have item fifteen and it's items from human resources and recognize Director Carol Bancroft.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Bancroft, Pennington County, HR Director. That the, um, item as far as a new position for administrative assistant two, just for context, that the position that was held by the administrative assistant position, that that has been vacated and that individual has transferred to another department. So in reviewing that position and what the needs of the department were, it, um, became obvious that it needed to be at the administrative assistant two position. So this is not adding a position, it is replacing one. So the FTE is included in the, the budget for twenty twenty-three.
Any questions?
Approval.
It's moved, and moved by Hickock, seconded by Drews to approve the administrative assistant two position in the Buildings and Grounds Department at a DBMB twenty-three, base rate paid twenty-one forty-eight and update the position listing on file. That was the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next two items are for requiring a motion, they're informational at this point, right?
Correct. That the compensation committee that they did meet to discuss the separation benefits. And it was determined that the separation procedures and policy was buried within various, uh, different, um, policies. And so to have this as a standalone policy and then to clarify as far as the treatment when somebody would separate. So it is a, a new policy, separation benefits policy four dot seventeen. And since it is just presented for review at this meeting, that the approval will be in the, the next subsequent meeting on the nineteenth.
Is there any questions for Carol on the policy for separation benefits?
Thank you. Thank you for the work, Carol.
You're very welcome. I actually, um, have to commend Sandy and Casey that they really worked on this one. So the next item is the compensation philosophy, and this is a part of the wage study project that we are working on for twenty twenty-five. Is to have a compensation policy that does explicitly spell out to any of our employees as well as to anyone who has seen our, our employee handbook as far as what our philosophy is. And again, adopting this would, uh, be in the next meeting, so it cannot be acted on today.
Thanks, Carol. And I, thanks for the work. That's very, it's a very well-written. Any questions for the Commissioners? No further questions.
All right, thank you.
Next we come up to item number seventeen and this is items from Commission Manager Holly Hennies.
All right, Commissioners, this agenda item is for the twenty twenty-three proposed resolutions that will be acted upon next week at the annual state convention held in Sioux Falls. Um, there are several proposals and you do have two letters, uh, from departments in support of two different ones. But I did want to share with the board on the very first resolution, uh, the proposal to establish a state-operated property tax software. Um, Treasurer Annette Brandt did come down and talked to me last week and does have some concerns with this resolution. Um, Pennington County is currently working with a software developer on implementing a new software system and has spent quite a significant amount of time and resources into doing that and has concerns with the state moving forward with a, a state-operated system. So I just wanted to share that with you. Um, but this is the opportunity for the board to support or oppose any of the proposed resolutions, um, that will be voted upon next week.
Is there any questions for Holly? Does the board want to make any motions to support? Or not support?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Drews.
I might just comment on, uh, uh, Annette's concerns. Uh, this resolution really has come about, um, because there are, I think, ten different software systems that now feed into the state. Is that correct, Holly? Do you remember?
Don't know the exact number, but that sounds.
Close to, close to that anyway. And so this was, uh, a, a thought really comes out of the, the Legislative County Funding Committee. Believes that, uh, it might be of benefit to counties if there's a system whereby all the counties can utilize that same system. So that's kind of the background on it. I recognize we've spent time and effort on trying to come up with a new system also, but. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions on any of the resolutions that are here too.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinet.
Uh, Gary, wouldn't that in the one up and running, if we were on, on that s- same software system? I think the, the state would run much more efficiently with all the other sixty-six counties. And that was the reason for doing that. It'd probably be very cost-effective. Might take a couple of years to get it up and running, but that was my understanding.
Well, that was, that was certainly the intent to, um, create cost-effectiveness for both the state and the counties in regard to them, so.
And the state would participate, if I recall, in putting that together in some form or fashion?
Yeah, the director of that department basically said that there was an idea that was well worth pursuing.
Okay.
Uh, no commitment on the part of the state at this point in time of saying that if we come up with a, a plan that it could be adopted and the state would go along with it. Still going to have to be agreeable to sixty-six counties in the state of South Dakota.
But I think we can all agree, the way it's operating right now, there's room for improvement. Whether this is the solution or not, I don't know, but, uh, it is not, uh, it sounds like it's not, uh, with all the different platforms out there, it's pretty confusing when you get to the auditor's office and you're.
Correct.
And so these were all running through the Black Hills area of county officials?
These were, they were all approved by the, uh, Black Hills County's officials at our July meeting, I believe it was.
Yeah.
And, uh, these also have been approved by the State Association Board of Directors. And will be presented at the convention in Sioux Falls next week for approval of the, of, uh, all those in attendance.
And then some of them we've seen already before us. Annette, did you want to make a comment since you, I seen you walk in?
Yeah, thank you. I was listening upstairs. So Annette Brandt, um, Pennington County Treasurer. So my concern was the support that the state has for their state-run program right now for Department of Motor Vehicle where it needed to be replaced about five years ago. They started a new system and scrapped it and are starting again. The bit support, they had, uh, um, the same problem that Pennington County has with keeping, um, programmers. And so the support really wasn't there for the counties. And my only concern is that maybe if they do do this, I do, I do see value where everybody's using the same system or at least has the capability to be able to use it, especially with the turnover for, um, employees across the state. But, um, I think that we'd be taking a step backwards if we put all of our eggs in with the state. If their system goes down, the whole state goes down and that's our revenue collection. So those were my concerns that maybe instead of one that everybody had to use, maybe they could subsidize the counties that are using something else. It would be a huge savings because just our portion of the new program's going to run about sixty-eight thousand dollars a year to support. Um, it looks like now anyway, um, and that would be an annual just in our department for the portion that the treasurer's office uses. So I do agree it would be a huge savings, but my concern would be the revenue source being bottlenecked with the state supporting the programming, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Annette. Any further questions for Annette? I go back to the board. Um, looks like we have questions on resolution twenty twenty-three dash one, which, which that one is, uh, to establish a state-operated property tax software. Um, resolution twenty twenty-three dash two, which is a resolution requesting a re- a fee increase for township winter maintenance is still there. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-three, number three, a rela- resolution requesting a change in minutes for annexation. And then we have a res- resolution twenty twenty-three oh four, a resolution to adjust bid limits. And we've gotten supports for that. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-three, which is to support, uh, amending current South Dakota state law uh, that restricts certain election-related filings to be done by five P M. That was one, that was brought from, to the commission. Um.
Mr. Chair.
I think that's it.
These, yeah, these are all, uh, the election, um, items. Uh, and there are a number of counties, not only Pennington County having the four-day work week now. There are other counties that they don't run until five o'clock in some instances. Some are closed at noon, some at twelve-thirty, some at four o'clock. So this is just trying to bring all these various sections of law into compliance, basically saying, uh, essentially your last day of business in that, in the county.
So I'd probably look for a motion in support of the South Dakota decision of counting Commissioners twenty twenty-three proposed resolutions.
I'd make that as a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Moved by Mr. Drews, seconded by Roskinet. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, Commissioners, the second item that I have on the agenda today is to seek direction from the board. If you wish to reschedule the special planning work session that we, um, had originally scheduled for July and then again in August. If you want to attempt to reschedule that this year, or if you just want to start again in twenty twenty-four, or if you want to choose to discontinue these.
I would go to the board. I think, uh, that this was originally starting back up, back up in twenty twenty, if I'm correct, to do these planning sessions. And the agenda on your last one, that was supposed to be last week, was, uh, pretty thorough, what the planning department wanted to go through. They wanted direction on, uh, the drainage commission. They wanted some directions on some of that other type of stuff. And so I think, I, I know it's a tough schedule to hit and it's like a half a day one, but it's given the direction to the planning, direction to what they wanted to get, to get input from the commission in order to work on stuff to bring forward, so. Um, I'm, I'm open to whatever the commission wants to do.
Mr. Chair, I would recommend that we consider rescheduling in twenty twenty-four. Close to trying to put in something together in twenty twenty-three, just let's finish out this year and then next year we'll find two dates for two thousand twenty-four that'll work for all the Commissioners.
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
So I was, um, I didn't know we're going to have a Commissioner missing, uh, and there was only going to be four of us at this meeting. Um, there wasn't any communication to us, um, at least to me, and, and Travis didn't know. And then Travis was gonna, I thought Travis was going to be there at nine. So I had other obligations and I had told you guys I'd be, I wouldn't be there till nine, uh, or close to nine, at least Travis, because I, I tried to time it. Um, I think we need better communication, um, when we're doing this, not from our staff, but from our, uh, Commissioners when we're trying to schedule something because, um, I didn't know some of this information. So I could have done or tried to get there a little bit quicker so we had that quorum. Um, I think they're very important and to discount all these things and all the times that that staff has done in the planning department for this year. So the V H R and everything else, um, I think is disingenuous of us to say twenty twenty-four. I think, um, those things were very important and I apologize, like I said, I had said ahead of time, I thought we, I didn't know we didn't have quorum. I didn't know with Travis, I thought he was going to be there at nine, uh, same with, and not just saying, uh, one person. I'm saying a few of the Commissioners, including myself, can communicate a little bit better if we're having these meetings, if we're going to be later. That way we can start a little bit later and have that quorum. Um, for me, um, like I said, you had the planning department put all this, uh, together this year and now we're going to just say, okay, we'll just try it next year. So I think we should, uh, plan something, try to get at least three Commissioners there and then anybody that can't make it, um, don't show up. And figure it out themselves about how to get all the, that information, so. There's some pretty important stuff on there.
So what you're, what you're saying is you want to try and schedule another one for this year?
Well, soon, if we could, because those are V H Rs, that's a drainage commission. There's some pretty important things that need to start before twenty twenty-four.
So what I'd suggest is probably, um, send out a Du- Google date calendar. I know for sure, uh, my September's well and part of October's is going to be tough too, so I'll just give you a heads up and, um, and then we're getting into the holidays, so. But I think we can attempt to do, uh, try and set out a schedule to the Commissioners and see what best works.
Okay, we will do so.
Is Commissioners agreeable with that?
Yeah.
All right.
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
At this time I will probably go meet with the planning staff, um, myself and other Commissioners can do that. Um, I think it's an update that needs to be done and I've been doing some of it already anyway. So I knew some of the stuff already, um, but I will go before, uh, September, October, whenever we plan that. I think those, uh, agenda items are pretty huge for planning, so I would suggest that the rest of this commission do the same. Instead of be, uh, on the backside of it.
Moving along, we go on to ten o'clock, public hearing per South Dakota S D C L. Moving along, we go on to 10 o'clock, public hearing, Per SDCL seven dash two one. I'll recognize auditor Cindy Moller. Oh no, sorry, sorry. I skipped, I skipped number 18, Interim Study Committee on County Funding and Services Update, Commissioner Drews.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. This study committee will meet again next week at the, our county state convention in Sioux Falls. And the legislative committee will be meeting, having their last meeting during that convention at the same location where we're at. So many of us can attend that. I think that Pennington County has done a good job in getting together with individuals, individual departments, that certainly this could have an impact on, including the entire county, for the funding study that's, that's going on. And so I believe that we're in pretty good shape as far as going in there essentially with a strong voice to give support to those items that the Legislative Study Committee probably will be recommending for making some adjustments during the next legislative session, which hopefully will benefit counties.
Thanks, Gary. And that's, that hearings can be held Wednesday, August 16th in Sioux Falls. So, yeah. We appreciate all the hard work you've done on that, you and Helene both and Sheriff for bringing some of this stuff forward and keeping us up to date. Any questions?
Holly, anything else on that?
I just want to say the, where are we at with that? The Study Committee on Funding, that was a very good presentation. I read through that, so I appreciate that. That was very informative. With that, we'll move on to Cindy Moller. And this is the time for consideration of the physical year 2020 provisional budget as the annual budget of the appropriations, expenditures and revenues.
Good morning, Commissioner Cindy Moller, Pennington County Auditor. I've prepared the adoption of the budget, the resolution that needs to be approved in order to approve the 2024 annual budget. Total amount of the budget is 125,291,000. Boy, I've just, 125,291,350. Sorry about that. Tripping over my time this morning. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions from the commissioners on the 2024 annual budget, amount of 125,291,350?
Kevin.
Ms. Hancock.
Thank you, Ms. Cindy. She answered a bunch of my questions beforehand and for the group, what is the, is it, can you tell me that levy amount this year?
The, get to the right page here. The estimated levy, the mill levy is going to be reduced about 12%, so it's going to be down $15.30 per hundred thousand.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So in that case, that doesn't, just because the levy's down doesn't mean we did better than last year. Is we are $10 million more than we were last year on our budget. I did look at some of the numbers with the county consolidated and some of the other areas. I'll just say up straight, I'm not in agreement with everything we put in the budget this year, but overall, Cindy, you did a wonderful job with the budget with Holly's help. Thank you, Holly. You're always a big help for that. I'm not in agreement with some of the other areas that we gave money or areas that we gave money for increase in amounts because of risk on assessment and some different areas. So I will approve this budget, but I can tell you some of the county's spending, I'm not in agreement with pet projects and other things that we're doing in the county for people, so, and other areas that should have been reduced.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. I would make the motion to approve the resolution adopting the 2024 annual budget in the amount of 125,291,350. Moved by La Croix, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion?
Chairman.
Any public comment? Now, Ms. Hancock.
So when we tell people that the county is keeping the budget down, it's not the levy that's keeping the budget down. It's, we are up 10 million this year. We do increase areas in Rapid City and property taxes because of that, but I still would think we could do better. And when we go to equalization, we are up 10 million this year. And just because levy's down doesn't mean we're not spending more than we should. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Now we've come to the time in our meeting for items from the public. I do not have any speaker request forms. Is there anybody that'd like to speak? Seeing none, I'd close public comment and I'd look for a motion to recess to allow planning to set up the computer.
So moved.
Moved by Ross Connect, seconded by Drews to take a break. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Just coming back from break. Cindy. Brittany.
So item 21 is the Consent Agenda. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item A is Plan Unit Development Overlay Review PU 22-04 for John and Tracy Weeby to review a specialty resort to include three tent spots, a treehouse with living quarters and a caretaker manager's residence. And Planning Commission recommended approval of PU 22-04 with 26 conditions. Item B is Plan Unit Development Overlay PU 19-01 for Brink Constructors, Inc., BCI Properties, LLC, Zane Brink as the agent to review apprenticeship training facility for linemen of Brink Construction and a Plan Unit Development Overlay. And Planning Commission recommended to continue the review of PU 19-01 to the September 19th, 2023 Board of Commissioners Meeting. And finally, item C is Major Plan Unit Development Amendment Review PU 19-06 for Rockville Goldtown, LLC, Pat Hall to review an amendment to an existing plan unit development to allow townhomes, apartments and commercial businesses. And Planning Commission recommended to continue the review of PU 19-06 to the October 3rd, 2023 Board of Commissioners Meeting.
Thank you, Brittany. Is there any members of the public who wish to have any of these items removed from the planning consent agenda? Seeing none, is there any commissioners? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve the planning and zoning consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Ross Connect to approve the consent agenda. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I will make mention, I forgot that the commission utilizes speaker request forms. If you'd like to speak on any item on these coming up, please complete speaker request form located at the bookshelf in the back of the chambers and return it to the commission manager, Holly, and it's located at the right side of the dials. If you are the applicant or the applicant's representative, we usually waive those. Contestant carries.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item D is Plan Unit Development Overlay 23-06 to allow recreational resort. The applicant is Horse Creek LLC, the agent is Garrett Kuchenbecker. Location of the property is 23570 Highway 385. It is 18.07 acres currently zoned commercial district. Existing land use is a campground, access is off Highway 385 and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. This item was continued from the last board meeting to allow the applicant time to address staff concerns being floodplain and onsite wastewater treatment. Just an update that the applicant has submitted his onsite wastewater treatment system information to DNR. As of August 8th, DNR responded stating that the systems number two and number three are undersized and cannot be approved. The applicant is actively working with DNR to gain their approval. Some compromises need to be put in place. They did allow floodplain, the drain field to be placed in the floodplain. He's working with an installer now to see if that's a possibility. So with that, staff does recommend to continue planning unit development 23-06 to the September 11th Planning Commission Meeting to allow the applicant time to address staff concerns.
So you want to continue to the September 11th?
Would be the following Planning Commission or Board Meeting, so it would be the 19th.
Nineteen, okay. I thought you said.
I'd make that as a motion.
Okay. We have a motion.
A second.
And a second to continue the Plan Unit Development Overlay PU 2306 to September 19th, 2023 Board of Commissioners Meeting. Is there any further comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Cody Sacramento, Mental Planner. Agenda item E is Road Construction in Section Line Right Of Way, CS 23-04 is to construct a road within the section line right of way between sections 19 and 20. The applicant is Scott Ferguson. Current zoning in the area is agriculture district, existing land use is residential. Access is off Deacon Drive and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. This was rather on for an apartment review. The highway department is not opposed as they are just crossing the section line. However, the applicant has stated that the road will meet ordinance 14 standards and the road will be used to access three properties and future development to the south. So staff is recommending approval of road construction in section line right of way, CS 23-04 with conditions.
Thank you, Cody. Any questions for Cody? Any comments from applicant? Seeing none, I go to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
Move to approve road construction within a section line right of way, CS 23-4 with eight conditions.
Second.
Moved by Ross Connect, seconded by Hagcock to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Morning again Commissioners, Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item F is Vacation of Section Line Right Of Way VS 23-02 to vacate approximately 1,170 feet of section line right of way between sections 15 and 22 of Township 1S, Range 5 East. The applicant and landowner is Shawna and Kyle McBride. Their surveyor is Renner Associates. Other affected landowners are Drew and Rebecca Schroder and Jim and Susan Nollet. Existing legal descriptions are lot 5, 6, 8 and 9 of Whaley subdivision. Location is near Whaley Lane on Highway 385 or off of 385. Current zoning is rural residential district, access is off Whaley Lane and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. When staff reviews these requests, we do apply the criteria on the screen, keying in on number three, are there topographical constraints in the section line? Staff found that there was not. Also, number five, is there access to United States Forest Service lands from the portion of this, this section line right of way? And staff found, yes, there was. You can see here, the subject properties are highlighted. All this in dark green is Forest Service, so the section line does provide access to both parts of those portions of Forest Service land. South Dakota codified law states that no Board of County Commissioners or Board of Supervisors may vacate a section line highway that provides access to public lands or public waters embracing an area of not less than 40 acres. Section line appears to provide access to that criteria. The applicants are requesting again to vacate approximately 1,170 feet of the section line in order to increase buildable space on your properties. When I did review this request, I did make contact with the applicants and asked if there was a possibility to relocate that section line versus vacating it. They said they would need a little time to consider that and talk to the other property owners who are requesting this. So with that, staff would recommend to continue vacation of section line 23-02 to the October 3rd, 2023 Board of Commissioners Meeting to allow the applicant's time.
Moved by Hagcock.
Sorry.
Seconded by Drews to continue to the October 3rd, 2023 Board of Commissioners Meeting. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, any further from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item G.
Items G and H regarding the same properties, could I request that they be discussed the same and voted on separately?
I don't have an issue with that.
To continue.
Uh.
Is H?
Or G?
Sorry.
Item G is Comprehensive Plan Amendment 23-07 and item H is Rezone 23-10.
And you're talking about how you want to take them both up at the same time?
Correct. Vote separately, but discuss.
Would the commission want to amend their rules and take items G and H up both at the same time?
So would we discuss each one, we discuss them together, but vote on them separately?
Yes.
Okay. Yep.
Our motion?
Yep.
I'd make that as a motion.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Hagcock to take them both up at the same time for discussion, but vote on them separately and seconded by, oh yes, Hagcock. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Jason.
All right. So again, item G is Comprehensive Plan Amendment 23-07 and item H is Rezone 23-10. The Comprehensive Plan is to change future land use from agriculture district to suburban residential district and item H is to rezone from agriculture district to suburban residential district. The applicant and landowner is Aaron Wells. Location of the property is located along Cortez Lane. It is one acre, currently zoned agriculture district. Existing land use is vacant, access is off Cortez Lane. There's no special flood hazard area on the property. Staff takes into account current zoning within half mile when we do, or within one mile when we take in rezoning Comprehensive Plan Amendment. So this on the screen compares the current zoning to the future land use to what's being proposed on the far right in brown. See the differences there? And again, this is the current zoning within a mile of this property. You can see suburban residential is in brown, agriculture light green, Ellsworth Air Force Base in dark green, rural residential in yellow, light industrial in light purple, and the city of Box Elder in white. Future land use, again, suburban residential in brown, agriculture is in light green, Ellsworth is unshaded, rural residential yellow, light industrial is light purple, heavy industrial dark purple, and the city of Box Elder is also unshaded. This is a view of the subject property. Staff also looks at roads and streets. Cortez Lane is a 66 foot wide planted right of way. It consists of 18 foot gravel surfaces. Infrastructure in the area includes private water and private onsite wastewater treatment systems. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. There were no objections or concerns received for either request. Staff's analysis of the request is that the subject property is located within the three mile planting jurisdiction of the cities of Box Elder and Rapid City. On March of 2022, the Box Elder Planning and Zoning Commission approved a minor plant with the following findings. The subdivision of the parent parcel will require the landlord to rezone the property through Pennington County if approved. The subject property was subsequently sold in the, to the applicant without the Comprehensive Plan or rezone being applied for or approved through Pennington County. County ordinance 14 standards requires suburban residential districts to have 24 foot paved surfaces and it is gravel. Again, it's 18 foot of gravel. Cortez Lane does not meet this requirement. We also require public water and sewer to be available for a suburban residential zoning district. So with that, staff recommends denial of Comprehensive Plan Amendment entry 23-07 and Rezone 23-10 as roads and infrastructure do not support further subdivision of residential development.
Thanks, Jason. Is the applicant here?
The applicant and the developer are both here.
Okay, I do have a speaker request form from James. Okay, I do have a speaker request form from James Chamber. You can come on board, James.
Thank you. So as he discussed there, in March of twenty twenty-two, I believe. I approached. DC Scott, their DC Scott surveying and told them I would like to look at the opportunity to possibly develop off those lots that were bordering Cortez Lane. And I had them handle it. They took it to the city of Box Elder. I see in the staff report here that there were the comments made about needing to rezone it. To my recollection and the paperwork I could find this weekend. I was not made aware of that, I guess, that there was going to be an issue. I assumed it would possibly be something to do with needing to rezone to residential. The part I did not understand was that there would need to be a paved road and water and sewer. I guess I've lived there for twenty-five years. We have not had the blessing of those things. Water and sewer, from my knowledge, is at least a mile away. There's nobody in the neighborhood is going to have water and sewer at any time in the future here. I would ask that the commission waive those requirements, allow it to be rezoned suburban residential if that's the requirement. And allow building permits to be obtained for lots six B, six A, and six C, which were the three that were subdivided there in March of twenty twenty-two.
So, excuse me, James. Aaron Wells is the applicant, right?
Correct.
And. You were a property owner in the area?
I sold.
You sold it?
To Aaron.
Okay, you sold it to him, but you did some work on it prior.
Can you repeat that?
You've approached Box Elder and those other entities before you sold it?
Yes, I had DC Scott, the land surveyor, replant it and take it to the city planning. And I guess at the time when it was completed, I asked if it was ready for sale, and DC Scott told me yes. Reading the notes now, I see that there were notes and comments from the city about needing to rezone it, but. I was not brought to my attention, and we did not understand the significance of that.
Thank you. I just wanted a little clarification on the history of this. So you sold him the property, and you'd done some work prior before you sold it?
Correct.
So he was under the understanding he could move forward after the purchase, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Chairman.
Ms. Hagka.
So all those lots that are on the screen under suburban residential. Jason, are those? Do those have water and sewer and paved road?
No, those were actually rezoned suburban residential district when we adopted the zoning ordinance.
Okay, and all of those are platted and any of those developed?
They all have houses on them, yes.
Okay, and they don't have water, sewer, and paved road on them?
Correct, yep. So those were created before we had a zoning ordinance. So once we had one, then that zoning district was applied to those lots.
So this particular property would have to bring it at least a mile in with water and sewer. To his house?
For further. For further zoning of that district in that area, that would be what's required.
And he'd have to pave that gravel road in front of him, which is a sixty-six foot right of way? Or not?
He'd have to improve it from eighteen foot of gravel to twenty-four foot of paved surface.
And how far? Just in front or the whole road?
The road.
So in the future, I don't see any of these lots being. Sold or done anything with until you have a huge developer because nobody's going to be able to afford a paved road and water and sewer on their own. And how many lots are already out there? Probably ten, fifteen?
I believe there is fourteen.
Yep.
Houses on Cortez Lane.
So what's the solution with? And how long do we? How long would it be before water and sewer were connected in this area, I guess, is the point because. I guess I'm not getting why we would do one lot. Like you said, we changed, I understood we changed the zoning to suburban. Is it because they can't, on these lots, they can't put septic and well on these lots at this point? Is that why we would require them to have the water and sewer hooked up at this point?
They could put septic and well on those lots.
We just have to ask for exception.
Right, so the goal behind suburban residential is to provide more of an urban setting, I guess, or suburban setting.
Right.
That would include curb and gutter and sidewalks and.
Okay, but it wouldn't make, but it wouldn't make sense to have one do it. Don't get me wrong, if he was the first one in the development, it would make sense to put curb, gutter, sidewalk. But for me, everything in the area is suburban residential. So it seems like rezoning into suburban residential makes sense in that. Says without, denying without prejudice on the second part, as the infrastructure in place does not meet the minimum requirements of low density residential. Any of those lots don't. So he'll be in the same thing as the next people coming up. They'll go to five meetings or four meetings, and then they'll say, okay. What's the solution? Water and sewer and the same issues, so. I'm trying to figure out why we wouldn't rezone it to suburban residential and why, because of the infrastructure, he'll have to come back and ask for a variance like we do every other lot. Why we're denying without prejudice. Was that made by the staff or was that made by the planning commission?
I believe both.
Okay, so what was the staff believes? Tell me what the staff believes on the suburban. I know you believe that you should have water, sewer, sidewalk, pavement. But you have fourteen lots in that area that have nothing, and I don't see them complying because he starts.
Right, so those were legal nonconforming, meaning that they could stay there as long as they don't expand upon the use. So expanding on the use is further subdivision of that area, which is what we have now.
So they're expanding on the use, so we're going to make them at this point, on this lot, starting with this lot, we're going to make them do in compliance with suburban residential.
Correct.
Most time I agree with you, but I don't on this. I think it's to be suburban, and he's going to ask for a variance at this point because, let's say. How many, where's the closest water and sewer, Jason? Like, do you know where it's at?
The Box Elder city limits, I believe.
And how far is that away?
Looks to be about a mile.
So what usually happens, and has happened in the future, is that you usually, once they do that major line through there, then you have to comply, no matter who you are, within four hundred feet at least the city. I don't know if that's a state rule, but I know it's a city rule, that they'd have to hook up to water and sewer at that time. So that wouldn't only be this lot, it would be all the lots in that area. So at that time, I would have to agree to go ahead and put the water, sewer, and pave the road and do everything you need to do, but what we're finding with some parts paved and some parts not paved in developments. Paved is causing issues for the non-paved. So like I said, if it was the first couple lots, it would make sense, but when you have that many lots that are unpaved, I believe you're going to cause more issues than less with adding concrete in the area. So those are my opinions, and for me, I would approve. That's my opinion.
Mr. Chair.
Can I, can I get a little clarification before I go to you, Ron? This is a one acre lot.
Correct.
And it's currently zoned agriculture.
Correct.
And the intent to change it from. Alleged to suburban residential district, is it to split the lots, split the one acre lot or just?
No, basically what happened is once they created this lot through Box Elder and didn't change the zoning or the future land use, they created an illegal lot. So the applicant came in to get a building permit, and I couldn't issue him a building permit because it was an illegal lot. So he's here today to request the rezone so that he can build a house on it.
Okay, Mr. Roskinet.
So when was the Scott survey done?
It would have been pre-March of twenty twenty-two. I saw in the commission meeting notes that Box Elder met on it on March.
So what he did was basically take a lot and then subdivide it in the two lots?
Yes, my bigger lot was twenty-six acres. And then if you see the highlighted lot there and then the one next to it, and then that I'd call the flagpole lot behind it. We developed those three, which would have access to Cortez Lane. And he told me, well, develop it with the one acre lot so it would allow a well and a septic system to be put on it, and that was in March of twenty twenty-two.
Who owns the lot to the east of that lot?
I still own that lot.
Okay. To me, I kind of see a lack of communication between Box Elder and maybe the county. Because then they, Box Elder would have knew that there's probably a slim chance of getting a rezone, and he could have been pre-warned, but I'm kind of leaning on. Along with Commissioner Hagcock on this. Just based, just based on some of the circumstances with the location of the water, sewer, and the. Expense of putting the infrastructure in relative to the road.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
So I thought I understood this one from reading about it, but. Commissioner Hagcock opened up some new areas that I didn't understand. And I would tend to agree with Commissioner Hagcock and Commissioner Roskinet. That. You know, this is going to be difficult, I think, to develop those properties under the current circumstances without looking back at what was done with those other lots previously. And so, Jason, as I look at this map, so as I look to the, just to the west of the subject property. Is that all zoned, including that number fourteen? Is that all zoned agriculture too?
Everything in light green is agriculture.
Okay.
And that's future land use, so current zoning is this map.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Or comments?
Here.
I'm going to ask the applicant, did you have anything you wanted to share? Before I go back to the board, sorry.
Yeah, I just want to say that I guess I purchased the lot, and me and Jim are both in the same understanding that I was going to be able to buy the lot and move forward to build a house on it. That was my intent from the start. I've already got financing, everything lined up, and a construction loan and everything, and as you see from the picture, I already had quite a bit of the dirt work already done. I never thought that there would be this issue. So I'm well on my way to getting a house started, and then when I went to pull the building permit, everything kind of got stopped there. And it sounds like from talking with the county and stuff, it was a communication issue between Box Elder and the county. And it sounds like they maybe have changed how they're handling that in the future, so hopefully somebody else doesn't get in our position. You know, obviously mistakes were made, but at this point, the lot exists, and I guess not allowing it to rezone puts. Me in a bad, really bad spot, and Jim in a bad spot, and I would think a not advantageous spot for the county to be into. With a lot that exists that nobody can do anything with. So, yeah.
Thanks, Aaron. Ms. Hagka.
Move to approve comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-three dash zero seven.
Would there be conditions to that? No conditions, okay. I'll second that motion.
There's been a motion to approve. Comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-three oh seven. And a second by Roskinet. Is there any tougher restrictions, Jason, on, need be added to that? Nope, okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next, we take up item H.
Here.
Ms. Hagka.
Move to approve. Rezone RZ twenty-three dash ten.
Second.
It's been moved to approve RZ twenty-three dash ten, the rezone, and seconded by Roskinet. Any further discussion? Any more public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
Next, this brings us. To item I. Megan, do we need to do both these together, two I and J?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'd look for a motion to take up and hear items I and J together, but vote on them separately.
I'll move, second.
Moved by Drew, seconded by Roskinet. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Megan Telmitch Planner, agenda items I and J are comprehensive plan amendment and rezone to change the future land use and current zoning for rural residential to loads and density residential district. The applicant is Adam and Sharon Weaver, and their agent is Sarah Cheddar. Location is twenty-three sixty-seven nine Straddle Room Drive, and the portion being rezoned is point seven four acre. The tax, excuse me, the current zoning is rural residential, and their existing land use is residential. There is no special flood hazard on the area. This item was last heard on August first by the Board of Commissioners, and the request was denied without prejudice. Since that time, the applicant has gone in to amend their preliminary subdivision plan with the city of Rapid City to widen the easement to sixty-six feet so that it meets the minimum requirement. Since the road improvements are now listed on the preliminary subdivision plan, but they haven't been done, our staff still does have to recommend denial. But the building permit cannot be issued unless that road is built.
Is there any questions for Megan?
So Chairman.
Ms. Hagka.
So if they did the twenty-foot road. Minimum twenty-foot road easement, since they did the sixty-six through the city like we told them to do, the staff would be in agreement?
Yes.
Thank you. So we can make it as a stipulation?
We can't condition rezones, but again, if the lot is created without the proper infrastructure, it would be, would that be an illegal lot? No, but it is something that we can hold the building permit for.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
Would another alternative be, that's based on point seven four?
Yes.
I was leaning towards a more equal split of three acres for the main house, and then the auxiliary lot of two point seven six acres, and then you wouldn't have to apply for a rezone, you'd just ask for a lot size variance, which I. I think staff would probably recommend that opposed to this request, if I'm understanding it right.
That would also be more favorable.
Because the point seven six, it just doesn't, seems too small to me, you know, would. If that lot was split more equally, it'd be easier for me to, and then you wouldn't have to do the rezone, you'd just ask for a lot size variance and still have the same end result, be able to build the sick-built house on the caretaker's lot.
Chairman.
Ms. Hagka.
So I'm in agreement with, it might need a variance, but this is like the fourth time these people have been to us. I thought that we were more leaning towards the sixty-six foot dedication and the road being improved. At that point, the staff today would be in agreement with that and move these people forward. In their building before it becomes winter, and it makes more sense also because you have the highway department that's in favor. Your staff would be in favor. If we did and made sure, well, with their building permit, they would make sure with the twenty-four, twenty-foot easement, they went through the city to do that sixty-six feet, which we asked them to do. They also, at this point, have no neighbors in disagreement, and the other side of that is highway service, so they're not going to be affecting. The easement and the road would affect developers on the other side, but not the highway service in a way that would be negative, so to have a smaller size lot for their grandparents, we've done that, I don't know how many times. So to have a smaller size lot for their grandparents, we've done that, I don't know how many times here since I've been here and not made them do a, split the lots equally in order to make it so they can get what they need on their property. Otherwise, in Ag or other areas, people wouldn't be doing those five acres. So I think to move these people forward, instead of taking them back for the fifth time and then bringing them back to the sixth time to us, the solution is pretty simple. Like I said, they've done everything we told them to do up to this point. It's highway service on the other side of them and the highway department is good with the road. And that's the big effect of the issue. It's not going to be development across the street or anything that they're going to be affecting by their small lot because in that development, in that area, you have six or seven landowners also that are in agreement that are around that Straddle Rim Road District. And most of the time, they're going to be the people that have the most issue with that lot splitting. So if they're in agreement, I'm in agreement. And like I said, highways and services across the street, it's not going to be a huge effect to those property owners in that area.
At this point, is there any more commissioners who want to speak before I go to the applicant and the agent? Who would like to go first, the agent or the applicant? Adam? And we did, I do believe all the commissioners got your email.
That was actually from Sarah.
Okay.
Yeah, so Adam Weaver, I guess applicant. One thing I just wanted to bring up, you know, Ron, we definitely heard your comment about this lot size. And we actually took it to the staff, which, you know, Megan does with thousands of these every day, so she may not remember this. But staff was against a larger lot size because it would allow future people to split that into a bunch of different pieces because it would be rezoned in a way that they can then split into half acre parcels. So what, so we stuck with the original lot size because of staff's recommendation at one of our many staff meetings.
So, and then that's where the lot size variance would come in, but that would put you back again in our eyes, it would be another application and another process to go through in this.
Yeah. Split the lot?
Yes. Or if he made it, made the two equal sized lots.
And overall, you know, like, like has been brought up here a few times, we've somehow managed to get every single person in our neighborhood, which is quite a few people, to agree that this is a good thing and they're all for it, which is miraculous in my opinion, because if you're done with that many different people, you would think someone would be mad they're not, they're all, every time we see them, they're like, hey, have you guys not gotten it done yet? What's going on? You know, they're, they're for it. You know, we got the City of Rapid City to agree, we've got the Water Board to agree, we've got the gas company to agree, and we've got the highway department to agree, and we've got the road district to agree. So I mean, it's, it's pretty actually miraculous, everyone's actually like in agreement, this is the best option here that we have in front of you guys today for the neighborhood. And you know, Sharon and I, in our neighborhood, are probably at least a decade younger than the next closest person to our age. So, you know, we're really trying to make sure that whatever is done is the best for the longevity of the neighborhood because we're going to be living there for quite a long time, we hope. You know, so, so we have the largest best interest in not just this little piece, but the whole neighborhood staying happy and together, you know, so. Any questions or anything?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
I guess I'm not against the .74, but I'm, what I am against is the rezon. You want the .74, ask for a variance. And don't rezon because I think that rezon is where I'm getting, that's where the planning commission has some problems. So.
And I think that's Sarah coming up.
Yes, I am Sarah Cheddar, the agent. I do think that we had tried to grow down every road, and I think actually in the last meeting that was the planning meeting, we asked for a variance and was told that was absolutely not an option. Because again, they never wanted to subdivide anything off to begin with. This all started by wanting to build either a mother-in-law suite, which it doesn't fit because they live in year-round, or trying to build an EDU for two people at 700 square feet, which also wouldn't work. So we were trying to figure out a variance and that way, if they didn't have to subdivide any of the property off, they absolutely wouldn't. So that wasn't, I mean, that wasn't the goal, was to subdivide anything. It was the, this was the route we were told we had to take because of the type of structure that we wanted to build.
Chairman.
Is Ron done? You done? Ms. Hancock.
So the problem is, and then what that does to the neighborhood also is when you think you're making bigger lots, they think you're going to split them exactly what Megan had said. So at that point, then they think you made two half lots that you want to do later and smaller lots. At this point, it makes more sense, again, to what they're doing. The neighbors feel more comfortable with that, not being able to split that lot later or make more lots there, saying, okay, they're just going to do one when they do, when they split it in half. So I understand why the neighborhood is in agreement and a lot of the areas that he spoke about is in that because at that point, it can't go any lower anyway. So again, we have done this over and over again, so I'm not seeing the contention with the planning department with this because we've done this in many areas, not just this one. And it's funny, because since I've been here, you always have one or two neighbors against this and you have none. So for me, that tells you that there's not contention with this and they're improving the road. They did all they needed to do to get this done. It just makes sense.
Any further comments? Sharon, did you want to share anything?
Is the baby speaking Sharon or are you speaking?
Sharon Weaver, homeowner, applicant. So we've been just working really hard to try to make this happen even before the baby was born. And it's really super beneficial for me and my child to have my parents here. We're going through my, my grandma transitioning from her home into assisted living and how hard it has been on my mom. And I'm, you know, having my mom here to help with the baby so I can be at work full-time. There's very limited daycare facilities around our area at all. And then, sorry. Being, being able to be there for her and my father as they transition. My father's in 72, 75, yeah, I don't know. And so he's starting to kind of, he can't hear and he struggles a little bit. And so, you know, having him close so we can take care of him too is very important. And so we're just hoping we can find a way to make this work.
Thank you, Sharon. I really appreciate you guys coming forward and I see this as a problem that, you know, our community is having, you know, we're going to have to take care of our parents, have them close by, daycare, that type of thing. And we've got to find ways to make that happen. And so I, I think, I'm going to go to the commission to see where they're at with this, but I got a good feeling.
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
Move to approve the comprehensive plan CA 23-06.
So we have a motion to approve the comprehensive plan amendment CA 2306 from Hancock consecrated by Mr. Drews. Any further public comment? Any further from the commission? See none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries with one no. Next, that brings us to item J. We took these up separately?
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
Move to approve public hearing of rezon RZ 23-09.
I have a motion.
Sorry.
And a second by Drews to approve rezon 2309. Is there any further discussion? Any public comment? See none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries with one no. Next, that brings us to item K. Who's representing for staff? Staff, want to go first? This is a request for refund penalty fee by Joy Johnson. And I'll recognize Brittany.
This is a request for a refund for a conditional use permit. They paid double for a conditional use permit because they were operating basically like a pottery kiln type service, a home occupation in their garage. So that's what they're requesting. The refund for is for the penalty fee.
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
Oh, they're doing what?
They have kiln and they do like pottery or like ceramic type.
They have to have a-
In their detached garage, it's a home occupation.
So they have to do a permit for ceramics?
Yes, it's a home occupation in a detached garage. They did get approved for it by the planning commission at the last planning commission meeting.
I didn't, I wouldn't even know you needed a permit to do a ceramic. They like have a bunch of pottery and they're having people come over and sell it?
Well, I'll let the applicant come up then.
I guess I, I didn't know you couldn't do that.
I had no idea you could.
Joy. Joy, you just need to identify yourself for the record.
Yeah, tell them your name, Joy.
You just need to tell us your name.
Joy Johnson.
There you go, Joy. Go ahead.
I had no clue that I needed a permit. I'd been in business for 23 years. We moved to the country three years ago. And it's just mostly people come and pick their stuff up and I do a firing for them. And I have kilns on site and I did not realize that I needed a conditional use permit because I didn't in town. So.
Ms. Hancock, did you have any more question? I got some questions if you don't.
No, I just moved to deny, or wouldn't charge them, but that's, go and ask the questions in case I'm missing something, Lloyd.
No, my only question, I've known people who've done this. I mean, I've been in Sue Pottery and I used to have a neighbor who did this also up in Star Village. She just had the small kiln one, one to do.
I have two.
You have two. And you'd make your own and tell them, it's almost like, quite frankly, almost like.
More of a hobby than.
Doing blankets or something along those lines. So that's what I was just trying to get at.
Make a motion. Move to request Joy Johnson, us to refund Joy Johnson penalty in the amount of 300.
Is that the amount?
Thank you.
And I'll second that. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Items from chair commissioners, are there any items, any individual member that would like to bring forth ideas or concerns to the full board? Official action will not be taken on any items brought forth at this time. Direction may be given to bring items back before the board for future consideration.
Mr. Chair. On August 18th, I did attend the senior companions luncheon where they recognize the seniors at Health Other Seniors. They hold that at the Journey Museum and it was always pleasant to see these volunteers that make others' seniors' lives a lot easier, so.
Thanks, Ron.
I think that's the third year that I've done that now.
That's underneath the reports.
We're mixing up, it's.
I, I do that, well, it's.
We don't, all do it, we're, we're.
Yeah, we do.
We're doing something on the top and then we think we can't do it at reports since we didn't have it at reports.
We never had any reports. But yeah, any type of reports, any, not just what's written down can be given underneath reports. This, items from chair, commission members is, is meant to, if you have a concern or want some information requested, that that's the time to do it. So then it gives staff the time and other commissioners the opportunity to know what's going on.
Sure.
So that's, that's why we do that. But it didn't sound like we have any, so I'll move straight on to committee reports and I'll let you start committee reports.
Talking to me?
Yep.
Okay. Well, Penning County Housing Redevelopment, I think Brian kind of touched base on that pretty much. We talked quite a bit about the repositioning and moving forward with that. And, and I think it's a right step for the housing authority. Community health, I'm going to defer that to Gary Drews and planning commission. We, we focused on, kind of wrapped up the possession on rental ordinance, which we pretty much approved as RAD. And the TIF committee that we had the day, the TIF amount went from 25 million rough to the 36 million and it stayed within that 35% increase. That's, that's permitted by South Dakota codified law. And that would be Hannie's development out by Menards. And so that was approved unanimously this, this morning at the TIF committee. That's my short and sweet version.
Thanks, Ron. Um, Ms. Hancock.
So again, Penning County redevelopment, Brian's doing an amazing job, as you can see, moving us forward in RAD. Repositioning, asset repositioning, scattered housing, on scattered housing, a lot of times I don't want to say it in front of everybody else, even though this is public. The general public, they've had more complaints on that scattered housing because a lot of the areas that they put the scattered housing, they thought they could mix it in with different areas. And some of those areas, people, no matter who's in those houses, sometimes they have pretty intense, as we've seen before here, discussions on having certain people in their neighborhoods. So it's unfortunate, but it also, the biggest reason is that those areas are hard to control and watch like we can in the big high raises and stuff because of the lighting, because of the cameras and things like that. So when you have them in the scattered areas, people can complain about people and we don't know if it's fact or not unless we drive by. And by that time, I know that from our motels, by that time, it's too late. I mean, you can't tell what happened. So I understand also that the scattered housing, that we will be placing the people in a, and, and taking care of those people. We're not just going to just say it's time for you to move. So I appreciate that. Like I said, a lot of the low-income housing areas and those tax credit areas, people do that to them. And then it causes another dilemma for our, not only our cities, but our counties doing that to people. The Central States Fair, very, very huge this year, they had the biggest event. It was the Nelly concert, the Nelly concert, I thought, I asked them if there was any girl or any girls in there and they said that, or I said there was only one girl, Nelly, and they said, well, that's not a girl. So it happened to be something different for the fairgrounds and actually something they will be trying in the future. They will be doing ag concerts, but they've had some huge events this year. All of the board members, we had these special meetings in between, just to see on Monday, Wednesday and Friday. Your chair of that board, Jerry Cope, is an amazing leader for that board. He gets everybody together, he's a good team leader. So we had these meetings to share with what was the negative, what was the positive. This board, and a lot of people had told me this year, including the people that were just random people, saying that they've seen the board members doing more stuff than they ever have. They've been more apparent. A lot of good board members, a lot of hard-working board members. So our staff, thank you to all the volunteers, holy cow. The fair cannot run without the volunteers. We served, I served four or five times, enjoyed it, harassing people in a good way. It was fun. The events, I went to a couple, I gave my passes away to people I do every year that don't get to see these kind of events or can't afford these kind of events. They loved it. They were so amazed by some of the stuff that we did at the fairgrounds. That's why I do that, just to see their comments. Whoever did, well, the fair, Ron and John and everybody who put that fair together, it worked very well. We did have kind of a setback with those, trying to use those metal detectors and that kind of system. Unfortunately, wasn't a very, positive in some ways and very not so positive. But you already know, first time they ever used it, they had some bugs. They had some people that are used to doing different events than the fairground events. So they had a few issues there, but overall, I'd say it was amazing, amazing fair and a very successful fair this year.
Thanks, Deb. Mr. Drews?
Okay, there's, relative to Legislative Summer Study Committee, we've already had a quite a discussion on that. We've had a couple of meetings since our last meeting, but all that was. but all that was explained during other discussions today. So on August seventeenth, at the MPO meeting, Commissioner Luttrell and I were both at that, we approved the Rapid City Area Transportation Improvement Program for fiscal years twenty-four through twenty-seven. Planned projects during that four-year period are estimated to cost over one-hundred-and-sixty-eight million, sixty-five million committed in Pennington County, over seventy-three million in Rapid City, over twenty million in Mead County, nearly one-point-four million in Box Elder, and three-hundred thousand in Somerset. And also, the South Dakota Department of Transportation has projects during that very time totaling about eight-point-four million. So, next few years, there can be a lot of various construction that we'll deal with. On August eighteenth, I, at the invitation of Senator Rounds, I attended his housing session, major portion of the testimony dealt with the out-of-state regulations, especially environmental studies that impact and delay repairs, improvements, and development of housing units. Brian Ockbach of Pennington County Housing and Beritise of Human Services explained how their various programs work and some of the hindrances caused by overregulation primarily at the federal level. August twenty-ninth, the healthcare trust board meeting, we did have considerable discussion on the financial condition of the trust board, and we will, all the information on that is going to be made public as soon as they're able to provide that information to those that are signed up under the health program. On August thirty-one, that goes back to Legislative Committee again, so that's all my report.
Thank you, Mr. Drew, and thank you for sharing the MPO executive, you take good notes. Community Health Center Board, one of the ones I want, have, I must have left my paperwork in the book, they're in the midst of doing a rebranding, instead of being Community Health, they're changing their name, and I'll, I'll shoot off copies of that this afternoon, of what they're going to do, they'll have an open house October, in October, to release that information. The other thing I attended also was orientation at Crazy Horse Memorial earlier this month for the, for the Crazy Horse Memorial Foundation, that was very interesting, that's a half-day class with the board members, and so that was very interesting and enlightening. With that, we did do same thing, Central States Fair ribbon cutting, which was, it was a nice hot day that day, I don't know if it was ninety-eight or what it was, but it was a warm day that day. So, they did an outstanding job, I, I think, it's always good to go down there and walk around and see, you know, in the last seven years, the revitalization of the fairgrounds is, is pretty amazing. I've seen the concrete work that they've done, I've noticed that, I mean, that was something that they, they worked on and also with the buildings, so they're doing a good job down there. I was only able to attend one, one event down there, but, but the Eastern Bronx was very well worth going to. That's all from my report. Anything else? If not.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
I did drive the South Rochford Road, it was on Saturday, and it's, even under construction, it's better than it was when it wasn't under construction, because they mag-watered it and they're keeping it in pretty good shape, so it's closed to local traffic, but folks can get through if they really need to.
Okay, well, that's good, you know, the last time I drove, it was just going to start, so, that's good. Anything else for the good of the business? If not, I go to approval of the vouchers.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I've moved to approve the voucher for the Rose NLLC in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty dollars.
I'll abstain.
Second.
So, it's been, motions been made, and second to approve the voucher for the Rose NLLC with Ms., for two-twenty with Ms. Haggard abstaining. Any comments? See none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries with one abstention.
Chair, I'd move to approve the remaining vouchers in the amount of five-hundred-two-thousand-two-hundred-two dollars and seventeen cents.
So moved.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Ross to connect, to approve the five-hundred-two-thousand-two-hundred-two-seventeen. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'd look to, motion to go into executive session pursuant to STCL one-dash-twenty-five-dash-two dash one for personnel members.
Moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. We're back, we're back in session. Look for motion to come out of executive session?
Move to come out of executive session.
Moved and seconded to come out of executive session, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Mr. Drews?
Move to grant an exception to the new higher pay policy and start Michael Harrison at grade B two-three, step fourteen, twenty-five dollars and twenty-four cents an hour effective September eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Ross to connect, any discussion? See none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn, moved by Haggard, seconded by Drews, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries for adjourn.